Mr. Chair, you do honors.
We'll go to the Lord in prayer. Lord Father, we thank you, Lord Father, this afternoon for all your blessings, especially as the word of God points us back to the cross of Calvary, how you suffered like no other for all of us, that we might have life, and the Bible says, "Have it Lord faithfully." God, we pray, Lord Father, that you remember all the individuals gathered here tonight. God, we pray especially for those that are deaf in the family, that you comfort them with your time of grieving. God, we pray for our country and our nation, our community and our leaders, that you just bless, and most of all, as you open the door to salvation through your blood that you shed at Calvary, we pray, your God, that the word of God points us back to a place called Calvary. We pray, Lord Father, that people would come to the knowledge of Jesus Christ, of you, and accept you as personal Savior. We thank you, Lord Father, for all your blessings, we thank you for things as well as they are. Remember those in the nursing home, the hospitals, especially those who have cancer and all these different diseases, that they're suffering, that you attach them and heal the body with your will. God, we pray you bless this meeting, bless our community leaders, Lord Father, that they be led by the spirit of God over the decisions best for the city. And we just thank you, Lord Father, for all your blessings. In Jesus' name we ask and pray. Amen.
Amen.
Praise the Lord.
To the flag of our United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Joy Carter, go first.
Mr. Ballinger?
Here.
Ms. Green, here.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Here.
Number four, appropriate meetings, August sixth meeting, twenty twenty-one, thirty-six.
Number four, number seven.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number five, reports from your boards, committees, and your departments, motion carries.
Make the motion, we approve.
I have a second.
Second.
I have to call her up.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number six, any comments from the citizens? Special Agent Chad Depp would like to come forward and speak, please.
Chad? Do you think I can podium or not?
Yeah, you can stand up.
Okay. Just wanted to acknowledge, a few weeks ago, we'd done a marijuana saturation program up here in Scott County and Campbell County. The program, it's the Governor Drug Task Force, we travel all across the state, and this year we picked this area to do a saturation program. The city and the county both participated in this program, it was very successful. And the city and county alone, we made three cases, and we seized approximately 2,000 marijuana plants. And I could send a letter up here and, like an accommodation for the police department, but it, to me, it's more impressive by coming and talking with you direct. The manpower that comes from the police department and the sheriff's department, if it wasn't for the local support, this program would not operate. Our agency, which is the ABC, and also the TBI, Highway Control, and the National Guard participates full-time. The local city and counties, when they come out, they know the area better than we do, so they can get us around a lot better if we have an emergency, need to get somebody who gets hurt. You know, a couple of weeks ago, I got dog bit, so it hadn't been for Jimmy to get me to the hospital pretty quick, you know. But I'd just like to take that opportunity to thank you for letting the police work come out, and I know sometimes they go out to counties with us, and to me, that's good to have that community policing. And, you know, I've worked for cities and counties along with the state now, and it's good to see that the county and city can intermingle and work good together, and I think that's good for the community. Thank you.
Chad, you're heard, but... Any more comments from the citizens? Chair, do?
I have a problem.
Please.
I want to check on the form of the, if we come in an opening in the city council, the charter is not saying thirty days, that the council can appoint someone, forty-five days the mayor must appoint one, is that not what the charter says?
I believe it's six, what did you read, sixty days?
I don't have the charter in front of me, I don't think we looked at it when Mr. Charles passed.
Right. It's something like, if council, they have so many days to appoint somebody, if they don't, then I can appoint somebody.
Is it your discretion?
Yes.
I said it must do it, there's no penalty for it, right?
You don't have to do it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else, please? Is there any announcements? Kay, do you have any announcements?
No. Yep, we got music outside after the meeting.
Rain?
It's raining, guys. Music. And the parking lot out here, they can't pull a swing or something.
That'd be a trip in the high for answering.
Call.
Okay, under administration, you can mark them in the one office, we're not ready. Number two, it's appropriate main need for renovation, build a library, it's thirty-six thousand dollars. Kay, you want to comment on that, or?
Well, we're in the process of coordinating with all the department heads, and we, hopefully this Thursday, we'll have asbestos taken up, and we're taking quotes on furniture and lighting and knock down on the walls, so our hope is it'll have a nice conference room within thirty to forty-five days.
Okay. What's the clear, your counsel?
We're doing this in-house, aren't we, Mr. Saxon?
We're doing everything we can in-house.
Yes.
There are certain things we can't do.
Right.
But whatever things we can do in-house, we are.
I make a motion that we approve the money for the thirty-six thousand dollars for the library.
I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Call her up, Joe.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number three, approve removal of the fountain Freeman Park. Kay?
Well, you know, we discussed this in the workshop, and we could do this in-house, and we were going to dress up that park, Freeman Park, trim some of the trees, take that pool that's never worked well out, and maybe put a smaller fountain in later. But we're not asking for that, we're asking for permission to take that old fountain out.
Okay.
Do it in-house.
Okay. What's the clear, your counsel, have a motion?
May I completely remove the whole structure base now?
Yes.
Okay, I'll let you, we'll be involved. Okay, thank you.
Jim, I think, we talked about two, Kay, an idea, the fence, put it on the back, between the shelters, leave that walkway open, people can walk, people start to park in there. That's a complaint, so I'm... I think what's clear, your counsel, have a motion?
Second.
Second.
I have a second, call her up.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number four, approved pre-advertising for roofing bids to be bid separately, it's approved in the August meeting. Let me say something before we go in this. Since, you know, I know everybody involved, I know Malaco, I know Carl Burton, and, you know, I want what's best for the city, on the cheapest, on the best roof money has, you can buy at the cheapest price, that's what I want. And like I say, this thing has got to kind of carry away on some of these specs and stuff, but it's whatever the council wants, and I promise you, you know, it will be watched, we'll probably go back and use the same specs, may change a little bit, is that right, Reed?
This small, the only specs I can think of or change or procedure would be having to break it down, and what you voted on previously as far as doing it separate.
Right. But, you know, we want what's best for the city, you know, we're not here to poke and gouge nobody, but, you know, watch us bid, it's what we expect to pay, not five thousand dollars more, not a hundred thousand dollars more. And that's all I've got to say. Counsel, maybe anything?
Let me say this, Mike, please. I'm for not re-adjoining it. We've saved, and let me say this, by the way you guys, Danny, Mr. Administrator, and your staff, and so forth, you guys saved us, even though it wasn't done to stack like we voted on, but still, you saved us forty-six thousand dollars if we go with the route that we win. Now, if we don't do this now, and we do it any different, then we've opened up everybody's bid, everybody knows what everybody else has bid, so...
But, in the August meeting, we voted to have those bids separately, those are in the minutes, we can't go back and change.
But you might not save forty-six thousand dollars either.
But we're doing, we're doing what we said we would do.
Well, I know, that's true too, but that happens a lot of times in life. But I'm, I want to, and the gentleman that got the bid, the low bid, he says if Mr. Malaco wants to be right there with him, whatever he does, he doesn't, he doesn't mind his lot. And then, and so...
So how, how are we saving, what'd you say, forty-six thousand dollars?
There's forty-six thousand dollars difference in, in the lowest bid and in the next bid. But you opened up everybody's bid if you don't go with the low bid now. So you create more problems than what we've already got.
Reed, how do you advise us to move forward?
Well, I mean, I think you, I mean, I prefer, obviously, just to go forward with what you have, however, the big problem, I mentioned this today, we opened the bids, and I mentioned it in our workshop the other day, is that, because I remember when we voted, it was to vote three separate, and that's just, that's just what it is. And so when they were opened up, it caught me by surprise, when they were in a lump sum like that. And I checked, after we confirmed with what the minutes said, we checked with MPAS, and MPAS basically said that we didn't have much of a choice but to rebid it. Now, that's their advice, my advice, I don't think you have a choice. Do what you want to do, but, you know, it's regrettable, and I wish we could just go ahead and go move forward, but unfortunately, we have got, you know, it's going to be a damn, if you do, damn, it's a dump. You know, if you, if you go forward, you're going to open yourself up, if you, you know, maybe if you do it this way, you might open yourself up, but, you know, my opinion as well, I concur with what MPAS said, I don't think you have much choice.
I, I think in that August meeting, I think the subject came up, and I think Ms. Graham might have raised the subject about doing it separately, and I think that I actually made a motion to that effect, and I don't know if you seconded it, or, but we did vote that way.
Oh, it's in the minutes.
Yep.
Well, did MPAS also tell you, Reed, and Sid Hensley, our advisors, at the time, that were putting the paper, that it was illegal to have Mr. Malaco, who we had him, and let him bid too?
I think their opinion said that it would be preferable to not have him bid as a construction manager as well, and so, and I think that's the reason he resigned, that, proceed on with this bid.
Yeah. So...
Mr. Ballinger, you were right, you did make the motion, and I did second it. She just looked.
Ah.
On the, in the, on this meeting, Joe was wondering about the motions, he made the motion, and I seconded it, for us to bid those separately. Joy has the minutes, here we just look.
Oh, yeah, that was done, I'm not...
Right, yeah, he was just wondering.
Yeah, that was, that was done.
Okay, you wondered, huh?
If Mike and Joe decided to go with the full bid, I mean, Kay, and I'm not, you know, I know that it's not the right thing to do, but if, if it saved us forty-six thousand dollars, it's the right, the right thing to do, I don't care what it is.
Well, then that says our vote's worth nothing.
The only thing we're doing is just saying, hey, slap him on the hand, tell him not to do that anymore. But go ahead with the bid, and, and that way, if you don't, you've opened up everything, you just simply opened up, two wrongs don't make a right.
We're, we're in accord?
Yeah, so we've opened up everything if we don't go forward with the bidding.
Okay, if we, if council goes with the low bid, you couldn't, you couldn't expect Mr. Malaco to come in here and oversee these roofs for nothing. I mean, Michael Brainy's done dropped his fix up.
I'd agree a hundred percent, but now Mike said and told us that himself, we didn't ask him to do that, but he said and told us that he would. Is that right, Mike?
That's correct, Hansford.
He did, he sure did.
And I told you that I would.
But that, that, that's what I'm saying. And I just can't see where, I'd say where we're headed for more trouble if we go ahead and continue the route, if we don't do it this way, because we've done, had everybody open, you know, open the, the doors up to it. And I may not get a motion, but I'd like to put that into a motion that would go ahead and approve the advertisement, or not the advertisement, but for the roof bid, the lowest bid.
So you're going against what our attorney advises and what MPAS advises?
No, that was what he said, he advised us to go ahead with it. Isn't that right?
Well, I'd say, I would, I would be nice if we could, but my advice would be that you have no choice but to rebid it because of the situation we're in. I said, obviously, perfect world, we go ahead and accept this bid and take it, but I think since the, since the bid was in conflict with the minutes, I don't think we have much choice, unfortunately.
Well, why didn't you tell us all this beforehand, Reed? You were in the last, you was in our workshop when we done it.
Right, and when, in the workshop, when, I said that day, I said, the bid, it's not in conformity with, I thought that it was conflicting then, and that, and I got an opinion a couple of days afterwards for MPAS, yeah, so I just got it. So that day, I said, in the workshop, that my, I was of the opinion that you voted to vote it in three separate, three separate bids, or to bid it that way. And when, and when it came in, I was surprised when it came in a lump sum, I thought, now I said it, and, you know, I wish we could take this bid, but I think that...
Well, we went ahead with the procedures after they told us not to. We went ahead and advertised, and went with the procedures anyway. We put it in the paper and advertised it, said, because they said that, at the time, Mike only resigned the day of the contract, that they opened the bid.
That's the first time I'd ever seen the bids at that, that day when they opened.
But before that, they done told us, Kay, and Sid Hensley, tell you that, that you couldn't do that, because he couldn't be the, we changed it, we put it in a way that, we turn around and change it, but in the paper to the way that they said that we could do it, and, and do it legal, because we had him listed wrong, or something.
I talked to Margaret Norris, I didn't talk to Sid Hensley.
Okay.
And, okay, let...
Let me say something quick before you start, Kay.
Sir?
Could, could we let Mr. Malaco, Mr. Bangship work this thing out, and roof yourself?
Still, it's all the, still, the bottom line is that the bid incorrect, I mean, we can't fix it, they're going wrong.
Well, I feel responsible for it not going in on separate bids. I was told that it would be, and so was the mayor, that we'd get a better price if we bid them all three. I take responsibility, I was saying, no, it's got to be bid one, two, three, and that's done, been done, as bid as a, as a group, but if you want to light something by what we're on, you got to take responsibility for that bid going in as a lump sum rather than three different ones.
But Kay, did you call counsel and inform him?
I don't know whether I did or not, I don't think I, I talked to Mr. Malaco, and I talked to you, I talked to myself, and they said it saves a lot of money, I thought, well, let's do it, and that was a mistake on my part.
I'm just trying to make a good issue out of a bad issue.
I know that. Is there any way possible, I'm following our attorney's lead here, now, is there any way possible that you could undo the motion made by Mr. Ballinger and second by, I think...
Stephanie.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what the, I don't, that's how...
On the three, no, seven.
Right.
Could you back up on that, and resent?
Resent, could you, Reed?
If he did that, he'd make, would that make a big one? Reed?
I'm out, I don't know what you have in mind, but I...
It'd be kind of... What he's got in mind, in my opinion, is that he's asked me to make a motion to resent my provisional motion that was made in August, and for Stephanie to resent her second, which I don't know if that's legal or not, and then go ahead with the bids that you have.
I, I think on some things you can, and I don't think on a bid, whereas bids have already gone out, you've opened the bid, I don't think you can go back and, and rescind that motion, since the bids have already been opened. I don't think we can go back and do that, unfortunately, again, I wish we could. Thank you, but I mean, I think that's a slippery slope to, on a situation where you bid something to go back prior and rescind something, and rescind the bid specs or whatever, to conform to what somebody needs, so no, my opinion is we cannot.
It'd be kind of after the fact, right?
Absolutely, I think you're, you're begging for more trouble.
Well, can you see us getting into any trouble if we go ahead and approve, and approve the bid?
I can't predict that, I mean, you have exposure, yeah, I mean, it wasn't done exactly how you voted to do it, whether or not Mr. Malaco or the, I can't, Mr. Malaco or the other bidder, I can't remember who the other bidder was, but...
Call.
I can't think of it. Well, there's three, you have three bids, and so I can't answer that question for you. Do you have exposure, or yes?
Even though you...
Do you feel we'd have less exposure if we renewed?
You would have less exposure, yes.
Yeah.
You always got, you always have exposure, you're going to have even exposure, you know, like I said, you're going to do, you know, moving, either way.
I've heard that before.
But less, you know, but, but all I can tell you is, your minutes say you're going to bid it three separate bids, and it was, it wasn't bid that way. And all I can tell you is my opinion and recommendation is to rebid it. That's all I can tell you, whether or not you do it or not, is your call, you know, but, you know, your minutes don't conform to the bid.
What's the clear, your counsel, have a motion?
I answered, got an outstanding motion now, but he made a motion to approve.
I made a motion to approve, I hadn't got a second on it, but I did make a motion to approve the bid procedures that, to the lowest bidder that you went through with.
Okay.
Do you agree with that, Kay?
Yeah, I agree. And I'd be more than happy to second that motion if it weren't, you know, if it conformed to our original minutes. But I, you know, I kind of feel like Mr. Travis says, that you've got a lot of exposure there, if only just what your minutes say.
Steve, you want to tell me anything?
I feel the way that Reed does, we're, we're going to catch 22, and it's, it's, we have to decide something. We have to look at what exposes the city in least way because of risk. Someone coming back, you know, on a lawsuit, or a setting precedent, saying, well, even though you voted this way, and it's in your minutes, we can't change, you know, we don't want to set that precedent.
That's not good. Do I have a second for Mr. Hatmaker's motion? Motion carries for a lap and a second. Do I have a motion to re-advertising for roofing bids?
Somewhere.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call her up.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
No.
Motion carries. I have number four, approved application process for heat July, Reed, Kay, do you want to go in there?
Here, here.
Heat July, yeah.
TBA got a program in cooperation with Stoke Electric, that's been around for a thousand years, they came and measured every, they looked every light we've got in the city, outside, inside, wherever. And they sent us computer printouts, and it takes about three weeks to get this done. The cost would be forty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. TBA turned around and reimburses us twenty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That's a fifty-eight percent refund of our first cost, and eighty percent of, of these different buildings, for example, Johnny's Gym and everything, you recruit that money in four to six months by savings, and there's new LED lights, except, UX lights, so my thinking would be that you need to sign this agreement with TBA Stoke and get this done.
What would be our, our cost, Kay, do you?
Sir?
What was our cost?
Our cost is eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars, but the good part is you're going to recruit this, and the computer printout shows, like, one place recruited in two months, another place is four months. Depending on, of course, the police department, they, they're on 24/7, so they need to use more electricity than anybody, they recruit third to really fly, because the faster you use it, the more you recruit. So it's a good deal, and Mike, it'd be money well spent to spend this eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars to do...
Can you have Kay's recommendation for your third?
Mr. Saxon, they, they do all the installation and all, I think. This is, I got it broken down, this is for example, materials for, okay, Far Hall, they got them, they got the material and the labor, that's the total amount. For example, Far Hall Three, the material was five hundred and ninety-four dollars, and the labor was a hundred and eighty-eight. TBA pays four twenty, that's fifty-four percent, and we pay seven eighty-two.
This is the same people, Mr. Ballinger, I think that did the water plant and your own storage.
Yes. You killed us, we're pleased.
It looks nice, it looks nice and right.
I think it's a good, good thing for you.
I make a motion, we approve the lock, Reed.
I'll second.
Call her up.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. And Public Works, now new one, a trip part of Danny Binge, currently part-time, full-time labor with benefits of fifty salary, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-four cents effective date, September eighth, twenty-twenty, what's the clear, counsel?
I'm going to approve.
Have a second.
I'll second.
Call her up.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. I have number two, approve our ingesting, like, currently part-time employee, full-time labor with benefits of fifty salary, nineteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-four cents effective date, September eighth, twenty-twenty, what's the clear, counsel?
Stop it.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Call her up.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Daniel, Ingesting, welcome aboard about. I have number three, three, approve the main needs, we're paying the property owner, lines building, fifty percent of the cost will be paid by the property owner, Kay, do you want it?
Mr. Ballinger, you want to address that? The total cost, that's...
The total cost of that project is really three, well, let me take one thing, uh, total cost of that project, six thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars, half of it to be paid by the property owner, he assures me that when they got ready to do the work, he would give me a check for his half, uh, of the cost, that's on that, on that project. Then on the annex building, courthouse annex building on Dr. Beck Building, that is eighty dollars, of course, that's all city costs, you know, we pay all that. Uh, that's out of number two. Out of number three, when we got running the tonnage on Mullis Trail and High Street, we had estimated Mullis Trail High and High Street Low, I'm not asking for any new money, I just need to change five thousand dollars from what was budgeted for Mullis Trail to High Street, to make it balance out. So, whatever, the clear issue, council. But there's no new money involved, just taking it out of one pocket, putting it other, to make it all balance out.
How about the annex, you?
For them.
Eight, seven, eight.
There, I make a motion that we approve one, two, three, and Mr. Ballinger says.
Okay, have a second.
Second.
Colorado.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. I number four, this is resolution, resolutions twenty twelve dash ten, resolution providing a delivery of tax payments for the font utilities, you have a copy of it in your packet, the city will probably, could, nine, nine hundred, nine-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-three seats from the font utilities. What's the clear issue, council?
Some of it.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Colorado, please.
Mr. Ballinger?
Uh, I have a conflict with the font utility, above us.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. I number two, resolutions twenty twelve, resolutions for community service funding, thirty-one, comment on that?
Uh, we have a resolution to add, uh, the, the amount on the resolution to, from the community service funds, uh, that's left, about eight hundred and some thousand to the budget, and that way, uh, we've already scheduled, uh, just a few projects, uh, since July first, and so this resolution puts the, the balance of the money into the budget and amends the budget, the original budget, so that from this point on to June the thirtieth, you can, uh, approve the projects and not have to come with a resolution each time. And then if any bounces are left, it would just stay in that thing and probably, uh, and then flow to the next budget.
They have a motion to approve, uh, resolutions twenty twelve. I have a motion, have a second.
Yes.
Have a second, Colorado.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yeah.
Motion carries. I number three, ordinance twenty twelve, dash zero four, ordinance to establish a trove for city parks, on the first, is they agreed? We have a copy of the packet, I looked over it, and I think it's a pretty good ordinance, Johnny, occur? Okay, uh, is there any comment, council? Reed, good?
I think it's good, Johnny, I went through it, and I think it's, it's a good ordinance.
I, I'm with, with the pre-ordance, number twenty twelve, dash zero four.
Have a second. Okay, Colorado, George.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. I number four, ordinance twenty twelve, dash zero five, ordinance, a meaning to zoning ordinance, and a seal of authenticity, chapter four, section eleven, dash four, five, C two highway business district, by expanding the definition special exceptions as set forth in eleven, dash four, five, point five, first, second reading. Stan?
Mayor, council, each of y'all, uh, received a copy of this amendment, what this is, our C two highway business district is very vague when it comes to physicians, uh, medical clinics such as that in a C two highway business district. Uh, what this is going to do, it will be approved by board of zoning appeals for any new physician or clinics in a C two highway business district.
What's the clear issue, council, have a motion?
Some of it.
I have a motion, have a second.
Yes.
Colorado, please.
Mr. Ballinger?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Hatmaker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Being known for business, I call this amendment, John.
Up here, more, Colorado, please.
Mr. Ballinger?
Here.
Ms. Graham?
Here.
Chairman Hatmaker?
Here.
Mayor, thank you.
Here.
We have no, have, but, uh, I'm...